With that, I'm going to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled council meeting for the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, July 10th, 2025. If you guys could stand with me, I'll go ahead and do the invocation. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us together once again to make the best decisions for our community and for the citizens. God help us and give us wisdom and guidance as we do that. In Jesus's name, amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Mr. Young. Mr. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Thrawn. Mrs. Feeback. Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did not have any requested changes that I'm aware of, but if there are any questions or comments on it, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
In a second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. First person on the list is Mr. Mark Jenkins. And when you come up, if you could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Mark Jenkins. I reside at 119 East Nickel Street, Spring Hill, Kansas. I've, I've lived here in Spring Hill for now about eight years, two and a half years as a renter, and the last almost six years as a homeowner. Finally decided to bite the bullet and get a carport to protect my personal vehicle when I'm not out delivering packages for FedEx and come to find out that I needed to get a permit, which I did not know. And I got a notice in the mail stating that I needed to get a permit and that even if I had applied for a carport permit, it would not have been granted due to some other violation. I tried to, when I got the notice, I came in to talk to the enforcement officer to find out if there was an appeals process, to find out how to go about getting approval. Basically, he said there is no appeal process. It needed to be removed in 10 days where I'd get a citation. So 10 days have passed and I have received a citation. I now have the statutes in front of me and I guess one of them, section 17.310, basically, as I understand, it says a carport must be behind your property fence line, whereas mine is up to the fence line in my driveway. So there's that. The reason I, you know, I have the privilege to deliver FedEx packages to Spring Hill. I reside in Spring Hill and not very many drivers get to deliver where they live, so I'm grateful for that opportunity. But I'm not understanding why a carport, first of all, is considered a permanent structure when it is a kit that is put together without any cement or structuring or connectivity to the house to make it a permanent structure. It is movable. It is held in ground by five pegs on each side, which will allow it to not be blown away with the wind. But it's a brand new, expensive kit that I purchased and now I'm being told it has to be removed and/or else I'm going to be fined and whatnot. I just wanted to bring this particular section up to the board so that other people will know in the future that, first of all, you need to get a permit and then secondly, that, that behind the fence, I own the property behind the fence as well as in front of the fence. The reason I couldn't put the carport behind the fence is because I have trees and water issues, flooding, et cetera. And in order to possibly make it to code, it would, it will probably cost me between $3,000 to 5,000 to take my fence down, take, cut down the trees, grade it, get the flooding issue taken down, move the carport and re-put the fence back up. It seems kind of silly to, to be forced to do all that for a $1,500 carport to protect my vehicle from the elements when I, in the inclement weather, which will be coming this fall and winter, when I have to get to work and get out and deliver in the bad, bad weather. It takes me an hour and a half, two hours to dig out without the carport. I'm assuming it'll only take me half that time, maybe a half hour to an hour to dig out and make it to work on those days by having the carport. I don't know if there was complaint about the carport. Like I said, it's brand new. It's not going to diminish the property values of anybody's house in the area. It's not blocking the vision, line of sight of anyone. I can even back up my FedEx truck up to it and get that off the road when I come home for a quick break, grab some waters, lunch, whatnot, and back out to deliver. So yeah, that is the reasons I'm here to find out about getting a variance of some sort, possibly. I know there might be another avenue, some other zoning, something the attorney was telling me about that I might have an option, but I will be going to, to the court process on Tuesday. Not sure exactly how that's going to go, but I just wanted to bring this attention. And I'm sorry I didn't get a permit. I did offer to pay for the permit and any penalty associated with it, but I wasn't given the option to do that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we'll get that stuff to him that he was talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation this time and move on to a discussion item. First item on the agenda is discussion of the revenue neutral rate. And Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I sprung this on Amy just a little bit ago, so. There we go. Think my clicker's going to work? Oh, let's see. Well, she's looking, I'll start talking, you know, I've got plenty to say. Tonight, we're, this is one of the many steps in the budget process. This is the time that you'll make a decision about notifying the county about the revenue neutral rate, as well as set a ceiling or a not to exceed rate for the budget for Spring Hill and that you'll authorize me to notify the county of what our plan is. I think we have a good story to tell and a good budget. We had some unusual things last year that our revenue neutral rate, when we eliminated the fire district, shot it up to over 26 mils, which was above where we currently were and some things like that. So it did come back down to what I would say is a normal or correct rate. But the rate that we got for revenue neutral from the county is 20.676, I believe. Maybe it's going to work. Have a lot of good data for you, so. Wow, look at that. What I think is really important for you to know tonight is that you are not setting a mill levy tonight. I know some of the council members are newer to the budget process than others, but tonight we're just notifying them of some intentions. The important, most important piece tonight is you're going to set a ceiling, the rate we won't exceed, and we will have to live by that, which I don't think will be a problem. Our final budget can be lower than that ceiling. It doesn't lock us into anything tonight, but we cannot go over that rate. One of the other twists, I guess, in the 2026 budget preparation is we are expecting to see some changes come out of Topeka related to taxes, property taxes, maybe a lid or a ceiling on property taxes and good, bad, or indifferent. I think they almost got it passed this year. We should really expect that it'll pass next year, and we don't know the impact that will have on us. So I'm being cautious with our budget to set us up and put us in the best position for the '27 budget prep, depending on what new changes may come out of Topeka. So this is a seven-year history of the mill levy in Spring Hill and showing that we started out at 26.574 in 2019 and in 2025, we're at 22.97 or a decrease of 3.6, just over 3.6 mils, is the action that this council has taken over seven years. What I'm proposing today for 2026 is that we maintain that 2025 mill levy rate, which is a 22.97. Our not to exceed rate would be equal to the rate we have this year. That's my recommendation. And our RNR rate is seven, is 20.747. As you can see, we're currently over the RNR rate. We're not changing or recommending anything that would increase it over that existing rate. So the RNR rate would, will be exceeded if you vote to do so tonight. I also wanted you to see we have all the final assessed values, not final, but the preliminary assessed values from both counties. And our mill levy, I'm going to talk a little bit about what a mill is worth for 2026. We're seeing a 9.73% increase in the assessed value from the county appraiser. This is also adjusted down for properties that have tax exemptions on them, where we won't collect the tax because we've approved an abatement for those folks. So the total assessed valuation is 204,462,299 for both counties. It also shows you the history there where we've basically doubled in both counties in this six-year period. So what's the impact to the city for the change in the valuation? The value of a mill in '26 will be 204,462, which is up from '25, which was 187,703, an increase of 16,759, leaving our mill levy the same. It would give us an increased revenue of just under $385,000. By the way, that is a three, that would cover a 3% to 4% cost increase in our expenses, which is about what the standard is for cost of living increases and municipal price index and things like that. So the change in property valuation can cover the expected cost increases. So I'm going to open it up to discussion, but tonight what we're asking is for you to vote to notify the county clerks that the city of Spring Hill will exceed the revenue neutral rate, which we have for the last three years, and set the rate not to exceed the 2025 mill levy rate of 22.97. And I open it to whatever discussion you'd like.
I guess it's kind of our goal every year is not to exceed what we had the previous year, either match it or go lower. So I'm fine with this. I would, I would love to go a little lower, but I'm fine with keeping it as long as we don't go higher than last year.
Right.
I think, for those of you that understand revenue neutral rate, I think it's pretty much impossible these days to, to go revenue neutral. There's very few cities that can do it anymore.
It's very painful. I've, I've been emailing with the Miami County financial people and most of them who have gone revenue neutral in the last few years are looking for increases this year because they can't sustain it.
Yeah, it's, all the costs and expenses of everything go up, and if you're trying to keep the same with, yeah, it's just, this doesn't show. But yeah, that's, that's my short piece.
I do have the budget balanced for '26 at just under 22.97. Things change all along the way. We, you know, we get more and better information, but we are able to make it work with the things people need to accomplish next year and maintain that rate.
If it were me personally, I'd love to see it like 22, you know, 9.5, but that's just.
I'll work on that.
You know, that's just, if I could drop it just a tiny bit, I would.
Yep.
But that's, I'm fine with it, capping at that, but I'd love to see it slightly lower. I know we can't go much lower, but.
Can you talk about the two main factors that contribute to the valuation going up?
The two main factors?
So existing.
New construction versus existing property. That work is done by the county appraiser. We've met with the Johnson County Appraiser, which is obviously about two-thirds of our valuation. I didn't bring that with me and I should have.
Not necessarily the breakdown, but.
Right, but it is.
So the public can know why that valuation changes and.
Because of new.
There are two things that contribute to it.
We added about 300 new homes in Spring Hill last year. That is a normal year, a low year for us. I think we, I think last year, actually, we had a little lower year. It was about 240, but a normal year for us is about 300 houses, brand-new construction each year. You also see some changes in commercial property where they make improvements or expand. Clearly, the work going on at Cardinal Glass eventually will be reflected in our valuation as well, but it is a combination of the existing properties as well as new construction. We get a benefit because we have so much new construction and growth. It's definitely helpful. I was going to go back to that slide. You'll also see that we are at 9.73% total increase, which is almost the lowest it's been in six years. I think that's the market stabilizing as well as our normal increases are a little lower this year. We've been as high as almost 21%. So things are really kind of stabilizing. Easy to, you know, easy to say, make one neighborhood versus another might be a little different.
Well, I think, you know, inflation being lowered and.
Right.
You know, stock market's doing really good. Yeah, all those, all those together along with a lot of other factors, I think have really.
Right.
Helped out a lot.
The two anomaly years were when property valuation increases, existing property value was going up very.
Quickly.
Very high.
Yep.
I remember that on my own property.
Yeah.
Those couple of years.
Yeah, a little rough.
But we're, we're usually around that 9% to 10% in the other years outside of that.
Exactly.
That would kind of tell me that most of our growth is coming from new construction. Now, there's, I don't have any data to look at that right now, but that's, it's trending well.
We have shared that with you. I've not, I just received the Miami County full report, but the Johnson County one we received, and they, they come in every year and discuss it with us, and each of you should have a copy of that so you can definitely look at all the details you'd like, both for the countywide and the comparison to Spring Hill.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mayor that revenue neutral is not a realistic goal for us at this time and is probably not going to be for quite some time. I also would like for us to try and shave small fractions year by year. So I, I like setting the ceiling at whatever we were at last year and then trying to drop a little bit from that. You said like .05. I'd really try to go like .1, maybe .15. I don't know. I'm being a little bit greedy there. But yeah, I, I agree with, with what our pathway is here.
Well, and I think, you know, I think we'd all love to lower it a lot, but I think with some of the major road construction and infrastructure projects that are needed because of all the growth that we're having, I just think it's not realistic, although we'd love to just, you know, slash it like crazy. I think to be able to get all those projects accomplished and do the things that need to be done, I don't think, I just don't think it's possible to slash, you know, massive amounts off of it.
Yeah, it's not realistic with what our CIP list looks like.
Exactly.
Right. It's also, this is a year to be cautious. There will probably be changes coming out of Topeka, and we want to set ourselves up in a, in a stead, steady plan so that we won't be as hard impacted by changes that could come next year.
I'd almost, you know, just, I agree with, we can't go revenue neutral. I mean, with all the construction and just the things that are in plans and kind of heading our way, we can't go that way. But I do think setting ourself up to go down and setting that ceiling lower, I mean, just going from 24 to 25, it was a .034 decrease. I'd almost want to say the ceiling should be for 26, the 22,936, and drop it that same amount. So we're automatically going in lower. Granted, we'll probably try to hit lower, like, you know, Brian was saying, just shooting for the ceiling to begin with and having that original ceiling lower would be beneficial in the long run. I, I think a little bit is always worth asking for, rather than just remaining the stain.
I accept the challenge. Honestly, I do that. I, I know we've had enough work sessions that I've really heard, we've all heard what you guys are saying, that, hey, we'd love to shave some off of this and we'll certainly work to do that. I have been working to do that. And I know that Mrs. Jones and Mr. Massey were working on some things, that the budget is not final, and we would, we are doing the best we can to accomplish what you've asked us to do.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've had differing opinions, not you and me particularly, but at, on this group, on this topic of do we force ourself to go lower automatically?
Yeah.
Or do we leave our options as open as possible?
And then the goal to shave it down.
Knowing that we want to shave a little bit also. I prefer, I just prefer to keep our options more open, but I also want to say upfront that if we ended up going with 22,97, that that's not where we want the budget to land, you know, and all three of us are telling, telling them that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I'm kind of in the middle of you two guys where I, I'd like to start out with shaving it just a little bit, just, just because nothing else that looks good on paper and it feels like we accomplished something even.
If you set it lower, it gives us accountability to, that's what we have to do.
Right.
I feel, I feel confident that we will make a decision in the future that will be lower than 22,97.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think if we don't set that ceiling now, there's no guarantee we're going to be lower.
That's right. It does not guarantee it.
Yeah.
I'm good with either one, any one of the three things we've said, so.
Chad, Chad, do you care to?
It's .034 mils, so.
It's probably about $30,000.
Yeah, it's not much.
That's just off the top of my head.
Yeah, about 25.
Expenses are.
Well, what is one mil?
204.
10, 10 million, 11 million.
10 million or 204?
204. I'd, I'd say if, I'd say let's meet somewhere in the middle. You know, Brian's kind of on, leave it how it is, couple, you know, shave it a lot, maybe meet somewhere in the middle.
Nine and a quarter?
Yeah, 22.925.
22, nine and a quarter?
I'm good with that.
My dad was an auctioneer. I feel like I need to check it. Okay.
Sound good?
A little bit, yeah. It's better than nothing.
All right, let's do it. 22,9, 925.
Okay. You'll need to adjust your motion. Yes.
Was it number three or?
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. This is just a discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
A motion for you in the formal agenda.
Yep.
To wrap up, I want to kind of tell you about progress we've made since the last time I was here and then next steps. Tonight, you'll vote to notify the county clerks will exceed revenue neutral and set a ceiling at 22.925. I was at the Planning Commission this week with CIP. I think that went really well. If you haven't had a chance to watch it, they had a good discussion. They were positive and supportive, asked the questions that they should, and then we'll go back there, meeting in August, and ask for them to vote to support the CIP for you folks to vote on it in September. Like I said, the balance is budgeted, the budget is balanced at the current mill levy, and that reduces my stress level significantly. I appreciate that. We have a date set for a combination revenue neutral and budget hearing, which is at the August 28th council meeting. And the next thing you'll hear a discussion on is the utility budgets. Can I answer any questions about the budget process or where we are or anything like that? If not, I'll end my discussion and I'll be back.
Sounds good. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that ends the discussion. We'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments on that, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
In a second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Chad. Motion carries three zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of appropriate, is that supposed to be under formal?
No.
No, okay. Okay. Okay, I was just kind of hiding in there. All right, next, we'll move on to formal council action. First item on the agenda is consider authorization of notification to Johnson and Miami County clerks of proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and to establish a public hearing date to consider authorization to exceed the revenue neutral rates. Mrs. Dunn, you're back up on the floor.
You got it. I should have just stayed up here. This is the step to complete what we discussed just a little bit ago. I won't belabor it, other than we need to change our motion to say that the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and set the not to exceed amount at 22.925. And the hearing date will be set for August 28th.
Okay. With that, I entertain a motion.
I make, I move to approve notification to county clerks of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and not to exceed 22.925 mils and set the appropriate hearing date.
August 28th. Of August 28th.
Of August 28th. Apologies.
No worries.
In a second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero zero.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for property on which to construct a parking lot adjacent to the Public Works facility. And Mr. Lau, you have the floor.
Hi. So we have been working with a property owner whose property is situated in between the Public Works building and the Police Department. It's the Spring Hill wash that is not really in use as a car wash. So you all have heard a little bit in the last few meetings, parking down there can get a little dicey for Public Works. Same with Police Department. So the city approached that property owner about purchasing it and then converting that into a parking lot for the city to use. We are at a spot where we've agreed to the principal terms. We're still kind of working out just the last couple of details of how the contract actually looks and some of the mechanisms of, of deeding. But we're at a point where I felt like it was time to come to you all and approve the mayor to enter into that contract when the final details are ironed out. The one detail that has been agreed to is the important one, which is purchase price. It's $95,000. So what it would be is authorizing the mayor to enter into a real estate contract to purchase that property for $95,000. If there's any substantial change in other terms, I, I don't foresee them, but if there were, we would just hold it off another couple of weeks and bring it back to you all again at the next meeting or the August meeting or whenever that takes. But from where we stood, it felt like time to kind of show the seller that we're, we're moving things in the right direction and, and ready to go forward with it, so.
All right, any questions, comments? I believe, believe Mrs. Feeback is on the phone now. Are you there, Mrs. Feeback? Awesome. All right, any questions or comments on that one? I think we've discussed it all, but if there are any comments or questions on it?
Yeah, we've been working on this for a while, you and the staff. I'm looking at it on Ames today. It looks like they have plotted it to two different pieces of property.
Yeah.
What's, what's the story with that?
So it's a little funky. When the current owner obtained that, something happened with, with the, the plotting and the transfer deed there. He has been paying taxes on that. It's like a 10-foot by.
It's really small.
Five foot, it's like 50 square feet or something. So he's been paying property taxes on that. I, I think for all intents and purposes, it is his. It was just some failure in the deeds that went to him. So the plan is to have him do a warranty deed for the property he owns and then what they call a quitclaim deed for that sliver, which is him just deeding to the city whatever ownership rights he has in that sliver, which we are all fairly confident. which we are all fairly confident it is by all intents and purposes his. I have tried to run down the owner of that tract as a, a trust that has not existed to family trust.
It's a different contact.
Right, so I've reached out to their attorneys that they don't have the paperwork for, they referred me to another couple of attorneys. As an attorney, I can say no one likes to talk to multiple attorneys in one week and I had to go do that, but we're, so far we have not tracked down anyone that has an entitlement or a right to it, so it will be, we're considering it his parcel to, to deed to the city. The quitclaim helps him out and it's not him guaranteeing it on the one percent chance it's not somebody's. And if somebody comes forward and says, hey, it's actually mine and you now owe me the same square footage price for that, it's going to be a very minimal amount of money and we will work that through if we need to pay them. We're not trying to shortchange anybody as a city, but we do feel comfortable in the position that that will be ours, so.
And then when the transaction takes place, we can replot it as all ours or we wouldn't even have to re, because we own the one right next to it also.
Right, yeah.
So it'll clear that issue up.
It'll clear it up, yeah, and we'll turn it into a nice parking lot and.
Good.
Then move forward, so.
Yeah, I think this is something obviously I've talked about, something much needed down there, parking's already an issue down there, so I think in that, you know, the facility, the building wasn't usable. I know, you know, people had hoped something would be built there, but it was, that's a pretty small, pretty small section there and this, this works out perfectly for all the facilities down there to get some additional parking that they desperately need, so I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's definitely exciting to get some more parking down there because it's on Saturdays and even during first Fridays and times like that, it's, it's hard to find parking. And I can't imagine, you know, staff having a easier time, especially when they're, they're outside of that time. Um, so I think it'll be good.
Cool.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a real estate contract to purchase property at one hundred South Main Street, Spring Hill, Kansas, six six zero eight three for a purchase price of ninety-five thousand dollars and authorize the transfer from a general fund for payment.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chad still there? Are you still there, Chad, we didn't hear your response? Opposed? Yep, motion carries four zero zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of funding agreement with the Kansas Infrastructure Hub for the Grant Assistance Program to assist with costs associated with the Safe Streets For All or SS4A implementation grant application and Mrs. Able, you have the floor.
Okay, that pretty much sums it up, so the next item before you is a request to have a funding agreement signed by the city for the SS4A implementation grants. You know, we've been working on SS4A for a long time, I can't stop talking about it. We approved the plan a month ago, we submitted implementation grants. With all of those actions, we were able to submit and it's a grant assistance program, uh, grant that we received from Kansas Infrastructure Hub to help cover the cost of grant writing. We had hired HDR to help us out with writing the grants and doing the conceptual design for those nine, seven, seven different project areas for the SS4A implementation grant. That took a large effort, so we applied to the Kansas Infrastructure Hub and received notice of award that we were able to cover one hundred percent of HDR's costs associated with that grant writing, so this is to close the loop on that and execute a funding agreement with the Kansas Infrastructure Hub for that amount so that we can get reimbursed. So with that, staff recommends the approval to authorize the mayor to sign this funding agreement with the Kansas Infrastructure Hub for the grant in the amount of forty thousand forty-two dollars, uh, so that we can get HDR paid. I'm available if I, if you have any questions.
Once again, this is, you know, a great thing that anytime we can get grants where we can get essentially free money and not put it on the back of, you know, the burden of the citizens is awesome, it's one of the things I really, you know, pushed really hard when I came on was to chase after grants because it wasn't really a thing we did much of and so, and then with you coming on even, even spearheaded that even further, so I appreciate your effort on it and definitely something I was really wanting to chase after hard, so this is great, this is one of, one of many we've been getting lately, lately and so, yes, thank you and open the floor for questions or comments.
Hundred percent cost recovery is always a good statement to make.
Yeah, yeah, usually it's a eighty, twenty or, or, you know, or maybe fifty percent, but yeah, a hundred percent is, is awesome.
Would be nice to get some administrative costs covering some of my time working on it because there's a lot of blood, sweat and tears that went into those grant applications, but I will take a hundred percent cost recovery.
Yep.
That's good.
Well, if no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the funding agreement with KDOT for the Grant Assistance Program funding and authorize the mayor to execute the funding agreement.
A second.
Got a motion in two seconds, are there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a professional services agreement with BG Consultants to serve as the owner's representative during the design and construction of a new wastewater treatment facility and Mrs. Able, you still have the floor.
Okay, so we're growing, as Mrs. Dunn mentioned, we continue to issue building permits, we continue to grow and thrive as a community. We're eventually going, going to exceed our capacity at our wastewater treatment facility, not for a while, but this at least gives us a little bit of time to get a new one constructed. We currently have one point five MGD capacity at our plant. We run about six hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day right now and we need to start thinking about the future, so we would like to build at least initially a five million gallon per day wastewater treatment facility, but with that, we want to have the ability to have future expansion. So we can potentially be a regional solution for areas within the Hillsdale Lake watershed. So we've been talking about this project for a while. We have decided to pursue a design-build alternative delivery method, progressive design-build. And in order to do that, we need to have somebody that is an extension to our staff. I have a lot going on, as you notice, every agenda, there's a lot of things going on. So I don't have the capacity to do the daily, you know, all the day-to-day stuff that it's going to take to manage this project. I honestly don't have the level of wastewater expertise that it's going to take to manage this plant, so that's why we went out to our on-calls. We had seven on-call firms that have utility services as one of their abilities. We prepared an RFQ that outlined what we were looking for in an owner's representative. We received responses from four of those firms and it was a really hard decision to make because we had four really good proposals. We narrowed those down to two firms and interviewed two firms, they both came in, they had excellent experience in communities just like ours, building wastewater plants just like ones that we want to build. So we finally decided on BG Consultants, they are a firm out of Kansas. They've got offices in Wichita and Lawrence. The main person that will be our primary contact, our primary representative, is going to be David Hamby, he's out of their Lawrence office, which is not that far away. He's got some secondary and tertiary people that will help out if there's anything that we need and he's got expertise within the BG consultant firm that can also help out to review any shop drawings or any other technical reports that are generated from this effort. BG has had several projects where they've been owner's representatives for communities our size and smaller. They've helped out the city of Edgerton with their wastewater treatment facility most currently. So it was pretty easy, uh, pretty easy to make that selection based on their level of expertise. But again, it was, it was a hard selection because we had four really good firms. Jacob, Lane and I served on the selection committee and made that selection. I would like to introduce David, he is in the audience today, this is going to be one of, this is going to be the largest project that we're going to have in our history. We've got hundreds of millions of dollars that's going to be set aside for this project and he's going to have a huge hand being an extension of our staff. So I had asked him to come here today to give you a face with a name so that you can get to know him. We'll provide you with periodic reports, this is going to be a three-year project, over a three-year project as we start implementing this. So you may see him periodically coming in and providing reports to city councils so that you can get a better understanding of the process and the timeline and some of the progress reports as we move forward, so. Right now, I would like to introduce David to come up and introduce himself as an extension of our city staff.
Thank you, Allison, I'm David Hamby with BG Consultants and it's a pleasure to be here. We're looking forward to working with your community, you guys have a big project that you're getting ready to undertake and we're excited to be part of it and assist in any way we can. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Sounds good, well, welcome. I don't think I have any questions, but I'll open the floor for any other questions.
No questions, good to have you onboard, we'll probably be seeing you a lot, this is going to be a pretty historic project.
I'm sure this won't be normal, we'll have a lot more questions in the future.
I understand, I understand, this is an easy one, so.
So don't get too comfortable.
Good to meet you.
Be nice to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I recommend the approval of the agreement with BG Consultants for the lifetime of our design-build project, I'm available if you have any questions.
I did just have one question, um, and about cost. How do we? That didn't really factor into our decision-making process, it looks like.
It was a small factor.
Okay.
It was a small factor because we knew that you guys wanted, would probably want the best value out of this project, so whenever they submitted their proposals, it was qualifications.
Yep.
And then whenever we narrowed it down to the two and brought them in for an interview, we had asked them to bring in comparable costs. How much was your contract whenever you worked on larger contracts and how much were those contracts and what was that percentage? We were looking at about a one point five to two percent of the total cost is what their contract is going to be.
Good.
So we are, we're actually going to step into this with their contract, it's going to be a three-phased contract, the first phase is going to get us set up for the design-build process. So it's, it's going to be that initial step because we don't know what this huge behemoth is going to be. We don't know how much time BG is going to dedicate, we don't want to do a cost not to exceed amount because we'll probably exceed that. So this initial contract is going to be for that pre-design services and that's going to be about fifty-five thousand dollars roughly, we're still waiting on a scope and fee. But just to give you an idea of how much that's going to be. So that's going to cover that initial step to get us to that pre-design. And then once we get a better idea of what the project is going to be, you know, what our hopes and dreams are, our vision for the future, what kind of technology we're going to use at the plant, then we'll have a better idea of what BG's involvement is going to be during the bulk of the design period. And then we'll have an amendment to that contract at that point. And then the third phase is going to be the bulk of the construction, so that's going to be construction, observation services and such, so that's going to be an hourly contract to come out and perform inspections and do any testing or anything like that that it requires. So we're going to have those touchpoints so that we don't approve an obnoxious amount of money that we have no idea what this animal is going to be. So that gives us that best value overall and have those touchpoints and the availability to have two project amendments or two contract amendments as we go through this project.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bid and approval of a professional services agreement with BG Consultants to serve as the owner's representative for the design and construction of the new wastewater treatment facility and authorize the mayor's staff to execute.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a Spring Hill Task Order number TC twenty twenty-five dash zero two with TerraCon for the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment or the ESA for the new wastewater treatment facility and Mrs. Able, you're a popular person tonight.
I am, I should have brought a snack, I'm up here for a while. So the next item before you is a request to approve a task order with TerraCon for work at the wastewater treatment facility, I'm going to have a lot of these task orders for you coming up as we start to slowly peel away this onion that's going to be our new wastewater treatment facility. Before we close on the property, it is responsible for us to figure out what we're buying. We know that this has been a vacant piece of property for quite some time, but still it's responsible for, for us to find out what we're getting, what the history of the property is. So through this evaluation assessment or this environmental assessment, we'll be able to evaluate what the property history is, what the pedigree of that property is, has there been a gas station on that property, are there any underground wells, are there any vehicles that have leaked oil over time, any pollution, that kind of thing, so we don't anticipate anything, but still we've got to go through the motions of doing this environmental assessment, so TerraCon has done this before for us on another project and they did a really great job, they were pretty thorough in their evaluation and they're pretty reasonably priced too and we're able to get to it in a timely manner, so we decided to go back to them and ask them to do these services for us as well. So with that, staff recommends the approval of the environmental, uh, environmental assessment study for the wastewater treatment facility with a task order with TerraCon. I'm available if you have any questions.
And just for the public, it looks like it'll be three thousand dollars and it'll come from the wastewater fund.
And that's within my authority, but, you know, again, I want to bring all of these task orders to you guys so that you have its full transparency as you see the money that I'm spending in these contracts that we're, we're executing.
And we always appreciate, appreciate that up here, for sure. We would. Yeah, we would rather you bring too much stuff to us than, than us miss something or not see something that we'd like to see, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve task order TC dash two zero two five dash zero two with TerraCon for the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment for the new wastewater treatment facility.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a temporary construction easements and permit drainage easements for the one hundred ninety-ninth street Ridgeview to Renner roadway improvement project and Mrs. Able, you still have the floor.
Okay, the next item before you is a request to approve some easements for the one hundred ninety-ninth street improvements. The city's been working on the design of one hundred ninety-ninth street from Ridgeview to Renner and we're, as we're finalizing that design, we need access to right-of-way permanent easements, temporary construction easements, all the things to construct the, the public improvements that we have planned for that area. We've identified seventeen property owners that we need to get easements from. We've already contacted all of them, presented them with offers, we contracted with John Amrin with the land company to provide fair market value for each of the properties and based on those fair market values evaluation for the easements that we need. We presented those offers and a little over half of them have accepted those offers and signed the easements and those are the ones before you today. And again, these are in total within my authority to go and get payment from Rhonda to pay for these, but again, these are easements that we need to sign and everything that we, we need to make sure that we're fully transparent with it and I'll be back before you here soon with the second round of these easements that will include some right-of-way, some pretty significant right-of-way, so those, that will be a pretty significant chunk, but we, uh, once we get all the easements and we can get moving on, getting this out to bid hopefully later this fall. bid hopefully later this fall. And with that, staff recommends the approval of the temporary construction and permanent drainage easements for 199th Street. I am available if you have any questions. No, it's, John has done a really good job of connecting with each of the property owners. He's had some really positive conversations with everyone. He is actively negotiating. There are two new properties that just came up with the expansion past Renner that we have just now contacted. We don't anticipate any issues with either one of them. There's a major property owner on the corner of Renner that we're actively negotiating with, and then there's another large property owner to the south of 199th Street that we're still negotiating with. There's been, to my knowledge, nobody that has outright refused. They're actively negotiating with John. He's doing a lot of legwork, and a lot of this is just back and forth and dealing with trusts and multiple property owners of the same property, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of legwork that goes into getting these easements.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Let's see. Move to approve the temporary construction and permanent drainage easements associated with the 199th Street Ridgeview to Renner roadway improvement project. Authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreements and authorize the finance department to issue payment to the property owners as outlined above.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0-0. Last item on the formal council action is consider approval of temporary and permanent easement dedications for Maplewood Valley subdivision improvements. And Mrs. Abel, it is your final call.
It's my final call, last call. The next item before you is a request to approve temporary and permanent easements for Maplewood Valley. Maplewood Valley is a subdivision that is currently under construction right now near the Aquatic Center. They're putting in streets, and they've already put in all their utilities and such. There's a need to have some off-site easements to round out their improvements. The majority of their easements are located on the adjacent city property, so it's kind of wonky. These easements are going to be dedicated to the city by the city, so there's only one signature line. The reason we need to do that is for future use of this property. Let's just say the city decides to sell off that property. We need to retain that easement to have the public storm sewer pipe that goes in that area so that the easement stays with the property regardless of who owns it. So even though the city owns it and we're deeding it to ourselves as easement, we still have to go through this process. There is a second easement in there from an adjacent property owner that's not the city to have some temporary construction easement for some grading on their property. So again, it's something that the Maplewood Valley subdivision thought that that property was owned by the city. We found out it was not. So this is, again, closing that gap, making sure that Maplewood Valley has the permission to work on somebody else's property, and they've worked out those negotiations separately. So with that, staff recommends the approval of the temporary and permanent easements for Maplewood Valley for the off-site easements necessary for that subdivision. I'm available if you have any questions.
How much are we paying ourselves for the easement?
$0. $1.
Just so I'm understanding that correctly, if, on the crazy whim that we decided to sell the pool property, which we have zero intention of ever doing.
Correct.
This would maintain the easements that we would need for that?
Yes, that is correct. It will maintain the public easements that we need to maintain our public infrastructure.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the acceptance of temporary and permanent easement dedications for the Maplewood Valley subdivision improvements.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. Thank you, Mrs. Abel. That ends formal council action this time. We'll move on to announcements and reports. Don't really have anything other than it was a good July 4th. I hope you guys all had a good one. Managed only one injury this time, so that was good. But no, it was a lot of fun with family and friends, so I hope you guys had the same. And with that, I'll move on to Mr. Young. What'd he say? No report. Okay. Mr. Peel?
The only thing, I got contacted by a Prairie Ridge resident. They were doing some preliminary utility work out on 199th this week, and there was a lot of chatter and chit-chat about the road and projects and new things that are going to be happening there. 199th Design is complete or really close to complete, so I was just going to request to staff that when we have information about that project, ready to go to the public, that we could share it with them as soon as possible about timelines, details of what the project is going to do. I know there's multiple components that go into that, and we won't be able to share all of those components all at the same time, but they're very curious what's going on and when it's going to start going on, so.
And along with that, to echo what you're saying, along with that, once we do have details of construction and lane closures and all that stuff, if we can get that all out preemptively as early as possible, so it's not a day or two before, and then everybody's scrambling trying to figure out what to do, so. Then, I forgot one thing. So I know there was kind of a hiccup, it seems like, a little bit with the trash, with Waste Management Services this last week. I know I was out on a walk on the 4th with my wife early in the morning, and I saw a trash truck pass me, and I'm like, what in the world? So I ran back home and got my trash out to the road. So I guess they had notified that they were going to, normally they're a day later on all those major holidays, but they had notified that they were going to keep the same day, and we had changed all of our notifications on every place on our websites except for one place. We had missed one spot, so we do apologize for that. So there's some that we're not aware and missed the trash. We did contact Waste Management, and they have agreed to, if you have anybody that did miss their trash or anybody else, if you have extra trash, they will take any extra trash over and above the two trashcans or trashcan recycling that you normally have at no extra cost. So if you do have, you know, the people that missed and have double the trash from last weekend this week, you shouldn't get charged anything extra for that, so. But we do apologize, and we'll try to do better on the communication with that because I myself was included in and did not have my trashcans house.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
So because they're going to have a heavy pickup day tomorrow, Waste Management's probably going to start earlier, so they're really encouraging people to put their trash out tonight.
5:00 AM.
Or by the normal 5:00 AM, because the truck could be early tomorrow because they have a lot more pickup to do, so.
Yeah.
They want it running tomorrow.
And also, they are bringing out extra trucks as well, so they will be, they'll be running a little extra, so just make sure you get all your stuff out early in the morning. With that, I'll move on to Mrs. Feedback.
meeting because of the 4th. The Planning Commission did not approve an updated site plan. The applicant was seeking to change their original site plan that showed a pool at the public amenity to a dog park and a play structure instead. Planning Commission voted that down, and Amy, I believe you were saying they've withdrawn that request to change the site plan? So it was going to come to this body on the 24th, and it will no longer be coming here on the 24th.
I talked to the engineer, and he was pretty sure they were going to withdraw it.
Okay, so it sounds like, according to the engineer, they might be withdrawing that, so right now, not much to update.
It's not a commitment they're going to put a pool in. They're just withdrawing the request to change their site plan. So the way that site plans work is it's, we can't hold them to build exactly what's on a site plan. We can only hold them to build exactly what's on a development plan. So as they were, the applicant was fairly clear about it, Planning Commission, they may elect to just build nothing in that space for now, which is something we will work to address with them, but we may be a little limited on what we can do there. And it will be a nice message for future developers that the city will probably be requiring more in terms of development and site plans going forward.
No report.
Mr. Massey?
No report.
Mr. Lau?
No report.
Chief Sutterby?
Yes, just wanted to report that I'd gotten out on the 4th and had a great time in the community.
I don't think your microphone's on. Sorry.
I'm trying.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
All right, how am I now? There we go. All right, great. Okay, good, good. Well, I just wanted to let the council know and the community know that I made it out on the 4th to several block parties, got to be a part of a parade in one of them, so I had a lot of great community engagement in that, on that day, and then there was one the day before that I made it out, too. So going to do the same this Saturday. There's a big truck event. Spring Hill Recreation is hosting, and so we're going to have some officers out there. I'm going to be out there, so if anybody in the community's listening, come on out, say hi, and look forward to seeing everybody.
I'll be there for a little bit, too, chief, so I'll probably see you there.
See you there.
Sounds good. Mrs. Abel?
Not sure if you guys got the message or not. We did receive notice that we were awarded the portion of the local match for the Kansas Infrastructure Hub to help with the implementation grant. This is something different than what I presented earlier. This is actually $1.9 million to help us with our local match for the millions of dollars, $11 million that we're planning on spending on infrastructure. So this is going to help get us down to that 1% local match instead of the 20% that we would normally have. So we did get notice of award on that. And then we did host for our wastewater treatment facility, we did host a pre-proposal meeting yesterday. We had several people attend. I think there was about 30 people that attended our mandatory meeting. If you don't, if you don't show up, then you can't submit a proposal. But we hosted that meeting. It was a great discussion. Those proposals are going to be due August 7th, so hopefully we'll get some really good proposals from some really great teams for the largest project that we're going to have in our history. So I think that's pretty much it. We've got a meeting next week with KDOT to review the 223rd Street design, just in case anybody wanted to ask about that as well. And then we had a field visit about a week and a half ago for 191st Street Signal Project. We're working on finalizing those plans and getting those to KDOT. We're still waiting on the final go-ahead from KDOT on our design report. It's been a few weeks since we submitted that. I believe that was about three weeks ago that we submitted that, so we're still waiting on them to get back to us, but we're still moving forward with the design and getting that done so that we can get this out to bid as soon as possible. I think that's everything I've got.
Mrs. Dunn?
No report.
Madam Clerk?
I did contact everyone about a special work session for next week, and it looks like Monday will work for mostly everybody, so we'll be sending out a notice on that. And that's all I have on that.
All right, Mrs. Jones?
I do have a report for you guys. Last week is when our city attorney, RFP, closed, and so we did get four submissions from interested parties, and so those will be in review to then determine how we best proceed, you know, discussing, do we move forward in the process with those, or do we look at other alternatives? So moving along.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Spear?
So our annual street maintenance project that you all approved a few months ago is underway. The asphalt work portion of that project should be completed early, very early next month, weather permitting. And then the chip-seal portion, and there's only two streets that are being chip-sealed this year, that will begin the end of this month, beginning of August, that that will get underway. So you'll see, you'll see some, not shiny, but dark black new streets coming soon. And we're also a part of that project, is we're making the base repairs where necessary in areas that we plan to resurface next summer. So we're trying to, trying to plan ahead and know what we're doing, what we're going to resurface next summer and make those base repairs this summer. We did the same thing last year, base repairs for much of what's being resurfaced this year. It's worked a lot better. I think it's an efficient process, so that's underway and should be wrapping up in the next two or three weeks.
Is that what the markings on South Street are?
Yes.
That's what it looked like?
Sure, it is a 15-year-old facility with hundreds of visitors a day. There are always maintenance issues, but it's operating well. We're having water quality, you know, balances are good. There is still some water leaking, but it's at a manageable level, and we're able to keep the pool filled and maintain those, all of the appropriate levels of, you know, chlorine and the pH levels and those things. So it's been going well. Attendance has been good, especially in these hot, dry days lately. So no, everything's going well. We also have already reached out to the plumbing company that helped us with the leak detection and repair efforts preseason, and knowing that we still have some leaks going on out there, we're going to bring them back out in the September, October timeframe to start looking again and, again, trying to be proactive with that maintenance. But it's, it's an inevitable part of the process, just given the age of that facility and the way, you know, just how intensively it operates for these two months.
What's the closing date for the pool? Do we have a set one, or is it when our lifeguard's attrition away?
It is set, and I don't have that right in August, August 10th.
Right around the beginning of school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's usually our staff.
Usually a few days before school. Yep. All right, with that ends announcements and reports, and we'll move on to executive session number one.
We need a break of any kind?
I think I'm good, if you guys are.
Going at it for an hour, so we should be all right. Let's see. First one for 10 minutes. I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive advice of council regarding actual or pending litigation pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:23 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Spencer Lau, city attorney; Lane Massey, city administrator; Monica Keeser-Jones, human resources director.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the Government Body Reconvened in open meeting at 8:23 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made. The subject was limited to the subject stated and with that I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
A second.
You need the motion first. I got you. I move the city council recessed the executive session for 20 minutes to receive advice of council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA 75-4319 B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 8:45 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be intend-- in attendance are the following. Spencer Lyle, City Attorney; Lane Massey, City Administrator.
Now I second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mo-- did you say aye? Sorry, I didn't hear. Motion carries three zero zero. See you soon. Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the Government Body reconvened in open meeting at 8:45 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nobody motioned.
Nobody motioned again.
So moved.
You started something. Somebody motioned. I didn't hear.
So, so moved.
Got a, got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero zero. Have a great night everyone.